Meeting to order. Roll call.
Bidlam, here. Phillips.
Here.
Stricker.
Here.
McCarrigan.
Here.
Solomon.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For public information, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is available for review. Notice of changes in the agenda by the city clerk. Additions may not be made to this agenda less than 24 hours before the beginning of the meeting unless added under item five of this agenda.
No changes.
Citizens with business not scheduled on the agenda as required by state law, no matter may be considered under this item unless council determines that the matter requires emergency action. Do we have any emergency action? Okay. Closed session, council reserves the right to enter into closed session if deemed necessary if the item is on the agenda as per section 841410 of the Nebraska revised statutes. Consent calendar, items in the consent calendar are proposed for adoption by one action for all items unless any member of the council requests that an item be considered separately.
I'll move to accept the consent calendar.
Okay, give a second.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? Okay.
Phillips.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Stricker.
Yes.
Bidlam.
Yes. Public hearings. So council to discuss, to conduct a public hearing set for this date at 6:00 PM. Receive information on authorizing the final tax request for the 2526 year. So I'll open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Elaine Kazire, Finance Director. So I'm gonna start with just gonna go over the resolution that'll come after this. The property tax request this year is $2,230,934.10. It's the exact same as the last two fiscal years, did not go up. The total assessed value from last year actually went up, it increased 11.44% from last year to this year. It's good, that means there's growth in the community, so. The next one then, four and five, those are the two, to me, the most important ones on here. Tax rate, number four gives you what the tax rate would be if we didn't increase our property tax. Number five gives you what our tax rate is, and you'll notice those are the exact same, we didn't increase it. So our tax rate is $183 per $100,000 value of the home. It's actually not what the general fund mill levy is, you have to take the, you have to back the off-street parking out to get it, so we're actually at $178 of a $100,000 home. So, and then as we go down there, the off-street parking district, same thing, $54,100, it's the exact same as it was a year ago. And that is one, let's see, $136 per $100,000 value of the home, but that is the exact same property request from last year as well too, so.
Elaine, give me the number again, you said that shows growth.
Uh, the assessed value is 11.44%, that is what the county assessor does, what they give us from last year to this year, and our real growth was .96, which is the highest that I have seen since they started adding that real growth.
Okay.
Factor in, that was about three years ago, so.
Any other questions or comments for Wayne?
I think it's worth mentioning that this will be the third year that we've reduced our mill levy. And we haven't taken any more property tax. I think we're gonna come in probably the lowest mill levy in the state this year. Kearney is actually gonna jump up above us, so that's something to be proud of, I think.
Mm-hmm, sure.
And we're still providing the same services.
Same services, no cuts, nothing.
Thank you.
Months of work and it's all compiled into one document, one page, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you, Elaine.
Anyone else for the public hearing? Okay, close the public hearing. Resolution and ordinances. Council to discuss and consider action on the resolution authorizing the final tax request for the 2526 year and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution.
Mayor and council, this is just what Wayne, just what.
Call back a motion.
Okay.
To approve the resolution.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No.
I'll second.
Any other comments, questions on that? Okay.
Stricker.
Yes.
Bidlam.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Okay. Council to discuss and consider action on the resolution to redetermine the blight and substandard condition of Area 1 and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution and survey.
So, pad notified us that for that CDBG grant, blight studies need to be within the last 10 years was one of the requirements. Blight study one was the first one done, clearly, which ended was in 93, so it needed to be reaffirmed. So Development Services Staff, Taylor and Zoe went and did a evaluation of the downtown area, all that Area 1 consists of, and came up with the survey that's included with this, which will reaffirm that blighted in some standard conditions still exist in blight Area 1.
Was anything removed from this survey?
We don't have anything to kind of compare off of, so.
It'll remain the same, that blight standard.
Essentially, okay.
I just have a question, maybe just for my edification on the, on the table of the addresses. It has the address, evaluation, yada, yada, in the, in the last column, it says status, and what does none mean and what does turnover mean?
So when we, when I got an email from Zach containing the priorities that we could, or what the state sets, there's five, I guess, parameters we can go over. Physical deterioration, deterioration of the building, that one's pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah.
The turnover one is buildings that have a, see an excess amount of turnover in the rentees or businesses that are in there. The none that was in there is just a placeholder for, we didn't determine any issues with the building, so we, we couldn't find anything, so.
So Taylor's their percentage of the businesses that have to have physical damage in order to meet the standard?
As we're, as we're inspecting, we're looking for any physical damage to a building at all. That would be the same thing as if MC Shaft came through and gave you another blight study, they're just looking for any physical damage to an area to show on the study to prove that, yes, it is blighted and substandard.
But I mean, in terms of total businesses, you have to have a certain amount that qualifier, are we okay? Okay.
Yeah.
Do a relay here. So the 1993 study was done from 14th to 20th, and I believe comprised of 192 buildings, so the state needed to know that 45% of those were still considered deteriorated, high turnover, anything that would meet the slum and blight standard. I believe they, so they reviewed, and I think 45% of 192 came out to be about 42, 40, 45 properties, my math is not right there, so as you can tell, they, they basically reached that number. The, it needs to be 45%, but they only reviewed 137, whereas the actual number we're looking at is 192, so.
Okay.
I'm assuming we, yeah, with the total issues of 55, we're about 10 over what we need to be.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Thanks, because my math wasn't working out.
Yeah, yeah, that's why, yeah, they, they did as much as they needed to, because we only need to do 45%.
Gotcha.
And just want to thank Taylor and Zoe and Zach and David for hopping on this and getting this done, pretty short notice last week.
Yeah.
Yes, thanks for that. And Kim.
Sorry, Kim.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
She'll move.
A second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Solomon.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Stricker.
Yes.
Bidlam.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Okay, council to consider action on the third reading of the ordinance adopting the budget statement to be termed the annual appropriation bill for fiscal year 2526.
An ordinance of the city of Scottsbluff, Nebraska, to adopt the budget statement to be termed the annual appropriation bill for fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2025, to appropriate sums for necessary expenses and liabilities, to provide for an effective date and provide for publication in pamphlet form.
Just a couple quick comments to thank staff, thank Lane, he's put together a really good budget. The process went pretty smooth, for the first time we went and, we went to each department and we looked at their CIP proposals and visited with them in the field instead of them just reporting to us. I think that went really well, but the budget process went really good, we have a good, solid budget, that's fiscally responsible, serves the needs of Scottsbluff, so. And to the department heads and council for the support too, it's, it's a lot of work, it's not an easy process, so. Everybody did a great job.
Any other questions, comments on that? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Bidlam.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Stricker.
Yes.
Okay, council to consider action on the third reading of the ordinance to rezone the proposed Lot 1, Block 1, Baumgart's addition from A agricultural to C3 heavy commercial.
An ordinance of the city of Scottsbluff, Nebraska, dealing with zoning, amending section 25-1-4 by updating the official zoning district map to show that Lot 1, Block 1, Baumgart's addition, located in the east half of the southwest quarter of section 19, Township 22 North, range 54 West of the Sixth Principal Meridian, Scottsbluff County, Nebraska, containing an area of 8.76 acres more or less, which was previously zoned as agricultural, A, is now zoned heavy commercial, C-3, repealing prior section 25-1-4, providing for an effective date and providing for publication in pamphlet form.
Again, Zach and his staff have worked really hard, this is an exciting project, this is a little bit of growth, so we're gonna annex in on a future agenda item, it'll be the third reading, so. Pretty cool stuff, so, something else to be pretty proud of.
And this will be Baumgart's and Napa, all the way to that Highland Road.
Highland Road, up to the ditch, is it the ditch or the Railsburg?
The Railsburg.
Railsburg.
That runs north to south, yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
She'll move.
Have a second?
Second.
Any other comments, questions?
Bidlam.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Stricker.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Okay, council to consider action on the third reading of the ordinance to annex Lots 1 and 2, Block 1, Baumgart's addition, Block 1, Country Commercial Business Park, an attractive land situated in the southwest quarter of section 19, Township 22 North, range 54 West of the Sixth Principal Meridian, commonly identified as land northeast of the intersection of Highland Road and US Highway 26.
An ordinance of the city of Scottsbluff, Nebraska, annexing real estate platted as Block 1, Country Commercial Business Park, situated in the southeast quarter of section 19, Township 22 North, range 54 West of the Sixth Principal Meridian, Lot 1, Block 1, Baumgart's addition, Lot 2, Block 1, Baumgart's addition, unplatted real estate described as that part of the east one-half southwest one-half of section 19, Township 22 North, range 54 West of the Sixth Principal Meridian, Scottsbluff County, Nebraska, as defined by the needs and bounds in the caption of the ordinance heading, amending sections 25-1-3.1 of the municipal code and providing for publication in pamphlet form.
And I should add that Kim does a great job reading.
Yes. Any other questions, comments on that?
This is the annexation.
Well, my comment is, is that I think it's, seems like a, I like it because it's obviously the tax revenue, but sometimes when you don't take into account public improvements that the development causes, makes it maybe not so lucrative, but there's, it looks like a solid plan for water infrastructure and easement, access easements, that hopefully will be useful for all purposes, including emergency turnarounds through the design, and so I like it.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
I'll move to approve.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
Any other questions or comments? Okay.
Phillips.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Stricker.
Yes.
Bidlam.
Yes. Petitions, communications and public input, Jennifer Branson's here from NPBD to give us a presentation on Scottsbluff's energy report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, my name is Jennifer Branson, and I am a retail account manager for Nebraska Public Power District, and I am here this evening to go over Scottsbluff's energy report with you guys, I believe that you all have a copy of that. This report really relies on what we refer to as the three Rs, rates, reliability and relationships, and it's just a really nice way for us to get this information out into the communities, community, excuse me. I believe I gave you some extra copies, so feel free to share them with the public if you would like to. So you likely know that NPBD is the state's largest utility, we serve 84 of 93 counties and over 94,000 retail customers in 81 communities. The city of Scottsbluff has a professional retail operating agreement with NPBD that allows us to serve you. Essentially, we are your energy partner and we take care of the system for you. Under that proagreement, NPBD leases the electrical system from you, and as you can see in this little orange light bulb here, NPBD collected and remitted $3,247,952.57 in lease payments and $213,000, 200, excuse me, $213,000, I'm gonna say that again, 213,787.26 in city sales tax to Scottsbluff in 2024. Also in 2024, $907,862.71 in gross revenue tax was paid to Scottsbluff County. NPBD continues to improve how we do business, we are deploying and utilizing technology to create efficiency through LED lighting, data analytics and our advanced metering infrastructure. So we've had our advanced metering infrastructure for quite a while, I think it's quite impressive, the system monitors itself, and often it can detect an outage without a human being actually calling it in. It can also give us a heads up if there's a potential problem, we can get out there, we can look at it, we can make repairs or do what we need to do before it becomes a bigger issue, so it's been a very valuable resource for us. Down there in Bullet 3, we want our customers to get the greatest value from their energy dollar. So part of that is our energy efficiency incentives, if you don't know where to go to get those, you can go to nppd.com, click on save money and then energy-wise incentives, and there's a bunch of them out there. For residential, residential, there's all kinds of things from attic insulation, cooling system tune-ups, there are ag products out there, there's stuff for businesses, there's lawn and garden, and there's of course EV, so check those out, you can see that Scottsbluff customers received $24,591 in those incentives, so very excited that that money was being used in this community. We also have an energy efficiency consultant here in town, his name is Chuck, so if you ever have any questions, just let me know and I'll get you in contact with him. I'm down there at the bottom, it's talking about your community solar, so Scottsbluff 1 and 2 farms produced 192,962 and 9,333,686 kilowatt-hours respectively, and all shares were fully subscribed, so excited to see that. At NPBD, we do believe in a diverse generation mix, so down here at the bottom, these little colorful squares, they show you what our generation mix is. NPBD has set a net zero goal by 2050, and you can see that we are currently at 58.3% carbon-free. You guys, I'll flip it over to the back, there's some facts up at the top, I'll let you guys just go ahead and read through those at your leisure, but I do want to draw your attention to the graph down at the bottom. So this graph is comparing NPBD's average residential cost per kilowatt hour to the rest of Nebraska and the US average. From 2014 to 2024, the average residential electricity rate increased by 24.4%, and NPBD did not have any rate increases at that time. So we're really, really proud of that 11 years that we were able to go without taking a rate increase. Last year, due to rising input costs, our board did approve a 2% rate increase, and there is a projected 3% rate increase for 2026. Now that still needs to go to our board and be approved, that will be in November, and then there'll be more information that comes out on that if it is approved. Over on the right-hand side, you can see that we are guided by our strategic objectives, so those include the customer experience, carbon business risk, the teammate experience, cost competitiveness and transforming and innovating. So one interesting thing that we have done this year is we've actually gone out into communities and we have just selected some customers and asked them, how are we doing? What do you want to see from us? What do you think our future looks like? What are we gonna need to do to meet those needs in the future? And we've had some fantastic results, so now we are just following up on those and seeing what we can do to improve our business. As part of improvement, I handed you guys, or Kim rather, handed you guys cards, I believe, that have our mobile app on it, do any of you guys have our mobile app by chance? Okay, it is the fastest way to report a power outage, so if you don't have it, I recommend downloading it. It's very nice because once you're registered, it's just a couple clicks of a button to tell us that you don't have power, but it also gives you updates, so it'll say a crew is in the area assessing the situation, so you know that there's actually a crew out there and they're looking for the problem. Once they found it, it'll say a crew is in the area making repairs and it'll give you an estimated time of restoration, so it might say two hours, because the system understands that a fuse is gonna take about that long. So at the end of that two hours, of course, if the power is not back on, you know, we have to get things done safely, so that's our number one priority, so they're not 100% accurate, but it is helpful. The other nice thing is for people that have friends or relatives in another community, you can actually bring up that map and you can look statewide, where are their power outages? So let's say a storm goes through Kearney, and you have friends there, you can go out and you can look and you can say, oh, hey, they're fine, there's nobody that doesn't have power right now, or yes, there's 60 people that don't have power, they're out there making repairs, so it is a very nice thing. For those of you that just are not interested in having one more thing on your phone, it's okay, we are still available to you 24 hours a day, seven days a week at 1-877-NASKNPBD. That is really all I have for you this evening, do you guys have any questions for me, or is there anything I can do for you?
I had a question on the second line you guys put on, on the west side of town, you finished it this summer. Should I help with power outages, we have one when we get storms, is it a backup?
That is to relieve congestion, I believe, I can certainly get you more information on that, Dennis Wade Man's probably gonna be the guy that's gonna provide you the best, most accurate information on that, but it is to relieve congestion, I don't know if they can backfeed to that or not, I would have to ask.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so the Scottsbluff, so solar farms 1 and 2, I'm guessing one is by the landers, is, where's the other?
One of them's at the NPBD office, Scottsbluff Solar 1, and then two is up by the water tower, kind of by the hospital.
That one I knew of.
Yes.
I just, now I remember.
So they took the pricing from both of those and they combined it so that everybody was getting a credit, instead of some people paying a premium and others getting a credit, so that was kind of a nice thing as well.
And of these percentages and the sustainability goal, what do you, and maybe it's not a fair question, what do you see the biggest growth in in terms of energy source in relation to like nuclear wind, solar?
We're looking at a lot of different things, we definitely believe in having that diverse generation mix. We are looking at small modular reactors, that's quite a ways out. We also have, I always have to get my little chart, or I forget the acronym RICE, reciprocating internal combustion engine, combustion turbines, so we have a couple of different things that we are using to generate.
Do the solar fields that we have, is that one of the reasons our costs stay low, does it help keep those costs low?
It gives the people that are signed up for that, those shares, it does give them a little bit of a discount.
Okay.
And the city does have some of those. So we actually, this year, because of the hailstorm, we had to go in and we had to make those repairs, so actually there's better output now after we have made those repairs, so the city got a few extra shares from that, so it is saving you a little bit of money that way. Anything else?
Also, NPBD does much more than electricity, and we leaned on them pretty heavy last week, we got a RFI, I think on Monday, a request for information from a developer with a deadline on Friday. I called Jennifer and she got NPBD staff and the Economic Development Department on it right away, and along with Lane and Zach compiled the information and got it turned in on time, so.
That's good.
That was kind of a comfort knowing that they were there and willing to do that, because I was leaving for Lincoln on Tuesday unavailable, so that was, that was pretty cool, so thank you for.
Absolutely, we're always willing to help, reach out anytime, it's always wonderful working with all of you, I know Betsy came out and she presented at our, our board meeting and we really appreciated that, so it's just a great partnership, I think, partnership, I think, and we just really appreciate you being our customers, so.
Also did the childcare study for Scottsbluff County for us, too.
That's very interesting.
Yeah.
Yes, we do some interesting things, don't we?
There's some big brains there.
There are, I wish I had some of those. Thank you guys so much.
Okay, council to discuss and consider action on a community festival permit for the Midwest Theater and the Downtown Scottsbluff Association on October 5th, 2025, from 2:00 to 5:00 PM to include vendors and noise permit for a night of vintage motorcycles and Nebraska Prairie Pirates. The permit also requests the closing of the 1700 to 1800 blocks of Broadway from 1:30 to 5:30.
Wire.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, for those who don't know me, I'm Krista Baird, the Executive Director of the Midwest Theater, and before I start, I just want to thank you, the last time that I was here, I was here asking for funds for our lighting and I'm just excited to announce that our brand new light board, I got the call today, will arrive on Wednesday, so.
That's good.
I'm really thankful. So, for those that may know Jim Newworth, he and his motorcycle collection, a director and producer of short films, actually came out to just borrow a motorcycle from his collection in making a documentary, and then of course was speaking to Jim, and in the process learned a lot, and in the course of that, changed the direction of the short film that he was making, and was entered into a contest about motorcycles, and won third in the festival, and so now we are going to be filming, showing screen that at the, at the Midwest Theater on October 5th, but in the course of all of that, and what the documentary is about is actually about Jim's motorcycle collection, as well as the fact that Gary Nebraska is, and was the very first Kawasaki dealership in the United States. And so what we're wanting to do is block off those, the streets from 17th to 18th in order to bring a huge portion of Jim's collection that he still has, as well as Masick's bringing in Kawasaki motorcycles. Some people from Lincoln, from Kawasaki, will be coming to town, a Mas, one of the original Masick brothers that's, or I think it's an uncle actually to Joe, that now lives, I believe in California, is coming back and they will be on the panel that's following the, the screening, and it's, they're gonna bring a whole bunch of stuff from Lincoln that will be with the director, Mike Smith, and it's just gonna be an afternoon of motorcycles. I'm not exactly completely part of all of that, but I will be a huge part of the screening and the program that follows that. I believe Powerhouse has already come and gotten their, their bar for that evening, for that day. I might, I guess you, you can't do motorcycles and not have a bar. So that's a little bit about, about the event and, and what we're wanting to do. Do you have any?
No.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the permit?
Still moved.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Any other comments or questions?
Okay, McCarrigan?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Didla?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Okay, council to discuss and consider action on a business promotional event permit for the Midwest Theater on October 11th, 2025, from 6:00 to 8:00, to include the parking of three food trucks in front of the theater at 1707 Broadway for a wedding.
Hello. So I have a wedding on October 11th, and the bride for the reception is, has requested four of the three food trucks. So her guests following, that will be the food for the evening. So they'll go out and get food and then come back into the theater and eat. I don't believe it will be much of, it shouldn't cause a lot of...
So the road will stay open and the trucks will just park on the side there?
Yeah, so outside of taking up a few, some parking spaces.
So is, so with the three food trucks, therefore, a food for a wedding, Joe Keesh is walking on the sidewalk, say, hey, I want to eat there, can I eat at the food truck?
I don't believe so. No. The bride's family is going to be paying for the food.
Wedding crashers.
Yeah, it would be wedding crashing, yeah.
The only reason I ask is because somebody walked down, say, oh, that's my favorite food, and I just don't want somebody to be embarrassed for asking.
Right, so we will, we will have staff that will be outside during that six to eight hour monitoring what's guests and what's not. Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve that permit?
Make a motion to approve.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Didla?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Okay, council to discuss and consider action on a special designated liquor license for EDS 3C LLC DBA Flyover Brewing Company to serve beer, wine, and distilled spirits at the Outdoor Husker Watching Party at the 18th Street Plaza on October 17th, 2025, from 4:30 to 10:30 p.m.
Good evening, council. How are you guys today?
Good.
I'm Nikki with Flyover Brewing Company. This is Haley with Flyover. We're here to ask for an SDO. I am not on the SDO, but I sent you because I didn't think I'd be here today, but I am our off-site manager. This is my off-site onsite manager, so I handle all of our offsite events. Haley handles all of our retail events. Same thing we do for Bands on Broadway. We'll have the food truck there. All of our servers are certified. We've wristband all of our guests, ID them. We've put up the signs, no alcohol beyond this point. I don't get any questions.
Is there going to be security at the gates as well?
Do you know, have you worked with Tevye about this? Yeah, we usually, like, somehow there's gate watchers, so we can do that.
I thought there was, so.
So there's another SDO coming that's part of the same thing. And on the application, I'm just making sure on yours, you have the outdoor license is 255 feet by 105. The next one says 662 by 415. If you're at the same place, which one is?
Yeah, mine, I have copied from prior years, so I've taken mine off of Google Maps. I don't know whether you're taking it or not.
Off of the plaza itself, that's the parameters, the gated area all around.
So, and I can adjust it if I need to, I can send you a new adjustment.
I just wanted to make sure we, one of those presumably is the right size.
Yeah, one of them should be. I mean, I usually take mine off of Google Maps because it'll let you measure it, so.
So I don't know if you or Kevin could answer, but you guys know about how many times we're using the 18th Street Plaza? It seems like it's a huge number this year.
It has been a bunch. They used it this weekend for the Duck Nightway. Yeah, we've had several events. You have 10 bands on Broadway alone now, so.
And you guys are involved in a lot of them?
Yeah, it's nice that it's being used, though. I'm glad to see that it's being utilized.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah. I think this is a pretty cool event, too.
Yeah.
I've heard lots of people excited.
Yeah.
With the big screen up, it should be really fun, so, yeah. I did have one, I did note one thing on here, that Heights' request is from 4:00 to 9:30. I might need to adjust mine. Mine is 4:30 to 10:30. I think the plaza closes at 10:00. We need to vacate by 10:30, so I might need to adjust my time if we get it approved. So I can send you back an adjusted time.
Anybody knows Scottsbluff have a home game that night?
I would imagine that Tevye probably worked.
I would think so, too.
It's a Friday, but I'm guessing that Tevye planned this pretty well, that it wouldn't coincide with the home game. In fact, it should be playoffs by then.
Yeah.
Middle of October should be playoffs. Let's hope they're not in, I mean, they should be, but you know, come on. That'd be terrible, wouldn't it?
They might be here.
You never know.
Any other questions? Comments?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do I have a motion to?
Looks like we're at McCook.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the SDO for Flyover?
Still moved.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Didla?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Okay, council to discuss and consider action on a special designated liquor license for BR Entertainment LLC DBA Heights Tavern to serve beer, wine, and distilled spirits at the Outdoor Husker Watching Party, 18th Street Plaza on October 17th, 2025, from 4:00 to 9:30.
Yeah, so basically, essentially, the same thing as the Flyover just discussed. I'll be there working personally, so we'll have wristbands, we'll have door security, and basically it's the same thing as the Bands on Broadway.
Okay.
And I'm guessing by filling out that number 662 by 415, you meant inside the plaza, not indoors, any buildings?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions for Ben?
Did we do one of these last year, or is this the inaugural event? That's a neat idea.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve theirs?
Still moved.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Any other comments or questions? Okay.
Stricker?
Yes.
Didla?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Okay, council to discuss and consider action on the community festival permit for Downtown Scottsbluff Association's Trick or Treat on Broadway on October 31st from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. to include noise permit and the street closure of the 1900 block of Broadway to West Railway from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m.
Good evening. Andrea Moncaim with Flyover Brewing Company, on behalf of the Downtown Scottsbluff Association, presenting these permits for the group. So this is the Trick or Treat on Halloween. It is Halloween evening this year. The Trick or Treating itself will be 4:00 to 6:00. They're requesting the street be closed at 3:00 p.m. just to help clear off cars. Gone back and forth on whether to close it. I know we try not to do that too often, but just with all of the children, but not worth the risk.
Absolutely.
Scott's so busy.
So busy. We tell downtown businesses to buy over 1,000 pieces of candy and we all run out.
Yeah.
So.
We used to not close off the streets, and it's just grown so big. I think everybody goes there and most of their Trick or Treating with their kids now.
Especially the younger kids, you can just do it and be done.
So a lot of people participate, and it's, there's people that aren't downtown that go downtown to pass out candy.
Yeah, we have, if there are groups that want to participate, you know, like, how can we be involved? We don't want to do a trunk or treat. We ask that no one pull up that way trying to do that, but there are storefronts available that people are welcome to use if it's an unoccupied building, as well as any of the off-Broadway businesses that are on the side streets. We welcome that. We like, everyone just kind of stays in that circle, but we welcome them to come onto Broadway to participate.
Of course, I'm thrilled that the streets closed for this particular event just because it's of what it is and the chaos. It's not worth the risk.
Okay.
I'm glad it's grown. I'm glad it's grown.
Yes.
I'll just stay because I have the next three.
Do I have a motion to approve this request?
I'll move to approve. I'll second.
Okay, any questions, comments? Okay, McCarrigan? Phillips?
Yes.
Didla?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Okay, council to discuss and consider action on a community festival permit for the Downtown Scottsbluff Christmas Parade 2025, sponsored by the Downtown Scottsbluff Association on November 23rd, 2025, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. to include vendors, noise permit, and the street closure of 23rd Street to 15th Street from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Yes, so again, this is the Christmas parade. You may notice a date change. The group decided to move it up a week. As far as, part of the date change comes from the business interests of some of the people involved in the planning committee, they're retailers, and that weekend with, you know, Thanksgiving, Black Friday, all of that, Small Business Saturday, it's just an impossible weekend to add this to their weekend. So we're trying to move it forward even, and it kind of kicks off Thanksgiving week and that whole holiday season. So this is just kind of the standard street closure, floats starting at the middle school, and then same traffic flow as previous years.
Will you guys like the Christmas trees that night?
Yeah, they're planning, we're, actually, I have a meeting with AirLink tomorrow, but we're hoping AirLink at 4:00 with Santa, the tree lighting at 5:00 in the plaza, which Tevye is doing, and then parade at 6:00.
When do we typically put all our decorations up for the street?
Well, it'll be a day or two before this event. Usually it's the week after they're putting up.
Okay.
Getting ready for the Sunday after Thanksgiving, but we'll do it early this year. And there is a parade permit that accompanies this festival permit, too. That's taken care of through the police department. You guys normally don't see a parade permit.
So Kevin, if I remember from our conversation right, there's, there will be support to help set up the closures and the monitoring of the traffic and all that stuff. I talked to one of the downtown business people last year when I went down. I was, I went twice so far before council, but just to see what it was like, and the, I was surprised at the number of businesses closing, a person that, when there's probably more people there than almost any time of the year. And part of it was is because they were busy running the parade, they couldn't have their business open. And I don't think that's hurting them any good if we don't have support.
You know, we're working through that right now, so we do, especially this event, we think it's pretty important for the community. So we want to make sure that the downtown association has the support that they need. And this is another event that's really grown.
And I guess I could say those same comments for the one we just approved, the Trick or Treat thing, that support.
Trick or Treat's a little bit more simpler than those paraded.
But still support for monitoring and such.
As a committee, we met with Kevin last month, asking like for it to be a bit of a team effort this year. And we plan to get police and roads involved just for some of that traffic control, especially up by the middle school. It's dark, kids are getting dropped off to run around and fight floats and fight hotties and stuff, and so it's a lot of chaos up by the middle school, so we're looking for some official support.
And plus, I mean, there are some people in this world that just don't accept that a ordinary-looking citizen closing the street has any right to do that, and I think that just lends better credence to the, yes, it's approved event.
We don't have it all sorted out yet, but we're working on it. We'll be ready to go.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
I was just going to ask real quick, how many floats did you have last year?
You know, I actually wasn't part of it last year, but I do believe last year was record-setting, possibly upwards of 100. I don't want to misquote that, I might be wrong, but I do feel like they had a great response last year.
It lasted a long time.
Way bigger than the ones I'm used to in my former locale.
Really?
Phillips?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Didla?
Yes.
Okay, council to discuss and consider action on a community festival permit for the Downtown Scottsbluff Association's Very Merry Christmas Market on December 6th, 2025, from 11:00 to 4:00 p.m. to include vendors, noise permit, and the street closure of the 1600 to 1900 blocks off Broadway from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Yes, so this one I am intimately familiar with. It's just our Christmas market. We've gone back and forth a few years on whether doing it in the street or in the plaza. One year we moved because of the plaza construction, and after we moved back to the plaza, all of the vendors and even the public asked us to go back to the street. They just thought it was more fun, a little bit more room to spread out. I already have a growing interest in vendors this year, so we should have more vendors, which just gives us more room to spread. And it also, as you mentioned, I think, it allows the shoppers to go around the other businesses, you know? So if they're tucked over the plaza, they might not necessarily walk past the other store.
Probably easier for the businesses, so.
Correct, yeah. And last year, I worked with Krista, and she created like a bit of a variety show in the Midwest Theater. We tried different years of having bands come and performers, and just with the cold and fingers and instruments, it can be tricky depending on the weather. So last year, we moved everything inside and that went really well.
That's a good idea.
It allowed a lot of groups to participate and come down, and then obviously, they could play in the warmth. So that was really good, and Krista's doing that again this year.
Good idea. My question.
Other questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Didla?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Okay, council reports. This item is intended for council members to update and inform other council members of meetings attended since the last city council meeting. Anyone have anything they'd like to share?
I got a quick Zoom report unless you guys have something to report. Other than just attending with Betsy and Kevin, the League of Nebraska.
Municipality.
Yeah. Which one's first? But the, I think you guys were unable to, unable to attend the security one for publicly. I'm going to try and put together a little kind of key points for that for everybody. Because it was good information, some old, but some new, so I just don't know when I'll get my homework done.
The conference was good.
Yeah.
Yes.
It was very good.
Safe streets for all, meeting Wednesday. Also, a landfill meeting. HDR is going to meet with the Planning Commission and Sue Cowan on Wednesday, so we'll know more after that. Right now, they're going to present the conditional use permit, and they're calling it a draft review, but we'll know more after that meeting. We'll have some information to report.
And on the safe streets, is there a timetable? When they think it'll be done?
You know, I think, I'd have to go back and look at the information, but it's not going to be a long drawn-out process.
Yeah, fairly quick.
They've really gathered a lot of information. It's very impressive, it is. They've done a tremendous job. But I'll check and report back, but I think it's probably going to be after the first of the year.
Well, this help us with working with the state to get things to move forward, do you think, or?
There's a, there's a chance.
Chance, okay. I'll take a chance. I'll take a chance.
Yeah.
Okay.
Want to tell us about the zoo?
Yeah, I got the zoo report, so.
The bear's enjoying his last days with the water, but there's some changes coming up and, of course, there's the big event coming on Friday for him. But, go ahead and go ahead, one there. So they're putting in a new sign, when we had the summer tour that we did, one of the questions was, what was his next project he was working on? And he wanted to clean it up, make it look nicer, more professional, and so they're putting in a new highway sign closer to the road. The original sign was way up there, back where the zoo is, but tucked way back there. So this'll be a better location, the State Highway Department approved that they could be closer, they were further back than they needed to be. And lighting signs is working that, and it should be up by next week. The hay fort's up, so some of the stuff's real quick, but the hay fort's up for kids if they like to run around and get messy, that's up and ready to go. Raj's getting ready for winter, of course, winter doesn't faze him at all, so he's happy and ready to go for it. And so Raj and the other animals, this is really a good time to see the animals in the zoo, just wanted to get the word out, because a lot of people just think summer, but with the animals, they don't like the super hot heat either. And so this, if you actually wanna see the animals and take pictures of them, this is the time to go. Oh, I think this is just Raj. And he does enjoy his space, the enclosure he has now is bigger than where he came from, so he likes having all the room.
He's pretty cool.
Yeah. So I have a thirty-two to eighty, last year, they had thirty-two school groups, educational events, and they're up to eighty, which is a huge increase. They have an agreement now with Scotts Bluff Public Schools, so the after-school program, which gets a lot of use, they're coming in, it's either weekly or every other week, and doing work with the kids after school, so it's been very productive. Helps the zoo and it helps the kids after school, gives them some educational fun. And then outlines are doing well. Jasper, or Jade, I'm sorry, was the smaller one, Jade's over there on the right side, Jasper's on the left. Jasper's pretty good with people, Jade has finally calmed down and she's more relaxed with people. So if people have been trying to go and see him, she usually hides, but she doesn't do that anymore, so now you can actually get and see them both. They're just about to the point, they can move them inside, put them in the same inside area. They just want Jade, for safety purposes, to be bigger, but outside, they've been doing really well, no issues at all with conflict. And then Spectacular's coming up, this'll be the thirty-seventh one, which is hard to believe they've done that many of them, but this is a big kickoff, is they go into the winter season that they always do, so. And then the last one is Banquet's, the third, this'll be the first banquet they've, as far as I know, they've ever had. So they have fifty businesses that are helping out, some are making donations, some are helping with games and setup, but there's been quite a variety, businesses have jumped in. They sell twenty-one of those corporate tables, which I'm impressed for the first-year event, I wasn't sure if they hit ten or twelve. They're kind of expensive, so the people going in know it's a big donation, and they've got quite a variety, they've got some doctor's offices, high-care law firms, some construction firms, so it's quite a variety they're helping. There are a couple of big announcements coming up that I promised not to tell, so.
Can you give us a hint?
There's some awards and some money, so that's, it's some good things, positive things, and so they'll announce that on Friday and they'll announce that to the crowd, some good positive news. And then tickets are still available, but it would help if you get them sooner than later, just so they can get a head count and plan for the food. They'll have a little extra if you wanna buy at the door, but obviously, if they run out, they run out, but it's better if you just get them early.
Very good, looking forward to it.
Yeah, should be fun.
Matt, they, when they had that little map and the different things, it said there was a garden area, did they grow stuff for animals like people like I do?
Well, so Jerry's idea, I remember you donated the vegetables. Well, apparently, everyone urged you, because they had so much, I offered to donate, they said, don't bring it. They got a lot, they had a lot.
Jerry's got the corner.
But they are working in the spring, maybe working with the greenhouses, that Gearing has a greenhouse at the high school, and then the high school kids could grow food, and then that would be used at the zoo before the school year ends. So, there you go.
I guess I'll throw my, the remaining away.
Any other reports, anything to update or share? Yes, we're good?
Oh, the one picture? Yeah, you can show the one. We live at Monument Marathon, this is our fourth year, but they did have record attendance.
Did they?
Oh, wow.
And so, there's definitely a gap between those frontrunners and the, you know, the pack coming up. The one lady that won the event went flying by, and to their credit, they're not even panting, wear a mile marker twenty-one. I'd be dying, and they just fly by. So I was impressed, we had fun, and fourth year, no injuries, everyone had fun. It was just, everyone seemed very relaxed and a lot of them stopped and take pictures, because they'd never seen our bluff before. And the Monument Marathon crew, they do thank you for the, I believe we gave them ten or fifteen thousand dollars for the advertising, and they do appreciate that.
Okay.
Pretty cool.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay, Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Vidla?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.